Chief, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Okay, and they're gonna be there.
This week.
The twenty-first? Yeah.
We would get it last Thursday. Well, I get on the thing.
Well, good luck with them, man. I'm sure you're gonna be fine.
I'm gonna talk. Okay. That's all we.
Who me up?
We're back here. We're back. Okay.
Who me up?
We're back here. We're back. Yeah.
Who me up?
We're back here. We're back. Yeah. Who me up? We're back here. We're back. Who me up? We're back here. We're back. Who me up? We're back here. We're back. Who me up? We're back here. We're back.
Yeah, I mean, disfrazed, I don't know.
Who me up? We're back here. What?
Yeah, I mean, disfrazed.
No, I haven't. She's probably stuck out there. Exactly. I don't know.
And Bob?
I don't know. They saw. Came down. I had a deal. I mean, over the bridge. I got a first look on that side. I haven't seen him. From that side. You're gonna be around Bob, man. You could, but don't, don't be there. Come put down in the, yeah, okay. Go room. Yeah. Xavier said, no, we'll see you back here in twelve months. And the guy, he said, no, no, we'll be back here in nine months. I tell you what, you know, they're gonna.
Oh, sorry.
Is it inappropriate? We can't start without the witches, can we? Okay. We start.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
I'm gonna be out of town that weekend. It's a shame. Can't go to it, because I'm dying. I will do. Have to see the clubhouse.
He got one of those letters. Yeah. And I mean, I went, I told you, I'm an architect. No, that's one that we told. But I'm a. She reminded me, and then, when she said it, I said, yes. I remember that, too, Charlie. And that we had a keep, because I'll be, I'll be at the.
Who's Erica?
Yes.
Who's Erica?
Sure. Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Bob.
I will do these, that's a sign.
Okay. And nobody virtual, either? Okay, okay. Yes, and I just talked to Heidi. She's reminded me about moving the order a little bit. Okay. So. Yeah. Okay. Everyone's, Heidi's on, virtually? Yeah.
She's on? Okay.
She's on? Okay. Call the roll, please. Mayor Mitchell? Here. Vice Mayor Best?
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo? Here. Councilman Fajet?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There is a quorum present. All right, thank you. Let's all stand for the invocation by Councilman Walter Fajet, please.
We pray this evening for the agenda set before us, and ask that we be granted the ability to work together in harmony when there's honest disagreement and dissent. We ask for the strength to speak up when given the opportunity to speak, and also the patience to listen receptively and empathically when it's time to listen. We ask for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues that we encounter, but also a keen sense of the welfare and needs of our residents. And may we be reminded that we're not only leaders, but also servants, and that it's our responsibility to serve the common good of all the residents of Miami Springs. Amen.
Let's all join in together for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight, and for those of you that are joining us virtually, welcome. Our first agenda item is awards presentation. And we have a presentation by the, this is highly irregular, by the witches of Westward.
Mayor, this is Heidi. As, as the witches are approaching, I just wanted to make sure that we also hit on agenda item number three, the agenda and order of business.
Yes, thank you, Heidi. Yes. Before the presentation, please, I'd just like to note that we are going to be changing the order of the agenda. We'll still do the presentation first, but then after open forum and after approval of the council minutes, we are going to move item eight A and B up before the reports of the boards.
Okay.
Turn. Hi.
Hello.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Management, everybody. Chief. Um, I am Witch Binks. And these are my witch sisters. And we are the witches of Westward. And we are from across the street, the Miami Springs Women's Club at two hundred Westward Drive. Oh, yes, and lest we forget, thank you so much for honoring us with the Miami Springs Women's Club Way. That was, it's so, eighty-two years later, but what the heck? We got it! Isn't that wonderful? Yay!
Unofficially, it was always that anyway.
I know, that's right. Unofficially. So anyway, um, we wanted to tell you about what's going on. I'm sure you've heard the little, you know, whispers around town. On October twenty-third and twenty-fourth, we are going to reveal ourselves to the city of Miami Springs. And we're also going to reveal where we live, our beautiful home. Do you know that the witches of Westward are the oldest members of the Miami Springs Women's Club? It's true. We've been there longer than eighty-two years. But I know we look good for our age. Um. So we finally decided to reveal ourselves to the city. And on October twenty-third and twenty-fourth, like I already said, we're going to do that with a really big Halloween extravaganza, and it's going to be for families. Parents, children. We're going to have, five times a day, we're going to have a, an experience for those people who are signed up for that time. We're going to have a witches tea, we're gonna have games, we're going to have crafts. We're gonna have not-so-spooky storytelling. And it's gonna be a lot of fun. In our back room, afterwards, we are going to have witch stores. Not witch stores, but witch stores. And we're going to sell curated items. We're going to have the witch boutique, the Westward Wan Company, Wicked Sweet Treats, and the Green Witch Botanicals. So we hope you're all gonna come. The tickets are available on eventbrite.com. You search for the witches of Westward. And I'll say Westwood, Westward. So that's that part of it. Now I have another request that is kind of unusual, but, you know, Halloween is usually when we have fun and we fly away and do all sorts of fun stuff, and sometimes a little wicked. But since this year, we're having our extravaganza on October twenty-third and twenty-fourth, we were wondering, and I don't know if I need to get a permit for this or what, if we could fly our brooms on the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth, as well as Halloween. Because we're gonna be all excited after the day, you know, after both days.
You mean, fly through the air?
Yeah. Yeah, I've already talked to Miami International Airport, so they're aware of it. You know, they give us permission every Halloween, but they said we have to come to council.
It sounds reasonable.
I think it's highly unusual. Have we ever?
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm working on, the FAA.
Take care of that.
Yeah. Yeah, how about?
Um.
Might be good for the chief to chime in.
Not gonna shoot him down, are you, chief?
I mean.
They'll give you a broom.
That's it, there you go.
Dude, do you need the field, do you need the field closed? Is that what you're asking?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, we don't need the field closed. No, 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 we're not limited. No.
Would you observe our speed limits?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And what, like, what would happen, say, at a red light? Would you just hover and wait for, you're gonna observe all traffic laws and everything?
Absolutely. Yes, 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 yes. We're good witches. We're, we've been, you know, members of this community for over eighty-two years, so.
Amazing technology.
I'm sorry.
Amazing technology.
Yes, yes. So I don't know, do you need to?
How about, well, does anyone have any questions?
Just go for a voice, just go for.
Warlocks or council members?
Mayor, I would suggest we just go for a voice vote on this. I think that's fine.
I think you need, uh, we need to do a budget amendment, too. You got some police brooms for him.
I thought he said he didn't have an air patrol.
He doesn't.
How about, do you?
So, so, listen, the, the, um, the extravaganza on October twenty-third and twenty-fourth is a fundraiser, but that goes for, for our charities and, and initiatives. So we really don't have a budget to pay for, sorry.
Pro bono?
Yes, please, please.
Which blink, blinky? Is it which?
Binks. No, Binks. B-I-N-X-X.
Okay, which thinks, um, just curious, do you, do you ladies of the night fly at night, or is it the day?
The Abraham.
I mean, you're.
We will fly at night.
It will only be at night.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, well, I don't know. Oh. Did any of you lose, uh, one of your pet animals? Please claim it. If it's yours, it's crawling around up here. Please claim it. Um, I, any other questions?
I'm, I have absolutely no problem with it, mayor.
Yeah, I have one question, if you don't mind. Um, where can I find your anti-aging products? Drop a little bit on my house.
That was Sarah Conlin.
Adriana, I know you have the potion. I know you do.
Um, how about any other questions? Okay, well, then I suggest that it's consensual that all of us agree that the witches of, of Westward will have permits to fly their witch, their brooms throughout Miami Springs, right? On the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, obeying all traffic signals and speed limits.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, wonderful. We'll look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time. We all do.
Be safe now, on those brooms.
What, do you? Which blinks? Do y'all want to take a photo up here?
They're, they're.
Oh, you, no wonder. Very dangerous.
It's yours, huh?
There, it's been crawling around.
Are you? You guys are great.
Let's take a photo with the council.
Boy, I got one in the mail today. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
That's a good question. Yeah. They're hilarious.
Hey, Walt.
I know, I know, I told you.
I'm telling you, right? Air support.
Okay. Hopefully no other unusual things like that for October. The next agenda item is we're going to approve, oh, open forum. There's no one, Erica, there's still no one signed up for open forum virtually either?
No.
Okay. Then we'll go to approval of the council minutes, approval of the council minutes August thirtieth, which is the budget workshop, and September thirteenth, regular meeting.
Through the chair, motion to move six A and six B, ma'am.
I, I had a question here. I'm just now reviewing. On page eight, on the September thirteenth meeting, paragraph three, where it says, Councilman Fajet made a motion to set the millage rate at the rollback of seven point two zero nine five. They put that he seconded as well. I don't know if it should be me.
It's, right, can you correct that? I believe it was.
I forgot it. Bravo. I couldn't hear. Sorry, I couldn't get to you. On page eight, under public hearings.
Okay.
Paragraph three.
Where Councilman Fajet made a motion to set.
Oh goodness, yes, that's correct.
And that's about it. I don't think I see anything else. Yes, ma'am.
Withdraw my motion and recharge six A and six B with amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Best?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo? Yes. Councilman Fajet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell? Yes. The motion carries. Okay, we're going to move now, um, item eight A and B forward, before the reports from the boards and commissions. And at first, we have to do a public hearing.
We're gonna read the resolution titles first for both items. And then, um, we'll open up a discussion among, William has a presentation for you, and he'll discuss. There, there is no percentage increase on the millage rate over the rollback rate, but he'll discuss any changes, he'll provide his presentation. And then, um, we'll open it up for public hearing and comments from the public, and any questions that they have, the city can provide answers to. And then, once we close the public hearing on both items, we can go forward with motions on the resolutions first for the millage, as it's set forward in your agenda, then the budget. So, William, do you want me to read the reso titles, or? I can't see you, so I'm gonna just go ahead and read them. So item eight A is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, adopting the final millage rate for the fiscal year commencing October first, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of seven point two zero nine five mils, which is the same as the rollback rate of two point zero nine five mils, announcing the percentage increase in property taxes and providing for an effective date. That's item eight A. Item eight B is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, adopting a final budget for the fiscal year commencing October first, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, providing for expenditure of budgeted funds, providing for budgetary controls, providing for grants and gifts, providing for budget amendments, providing for incumbences, and providing for an effective date. That's item eight B. And with that, I'll let William make his presentation.
We had, um, my mic was off, that's why you couldn't hear me, Heidi.
You know, after, these are, these are the crazy things that the mayor was saying shouldn't happen tonight, but maybe the witches turned off your mic, who knows?
Well, I think, I think the, uh, both resolutions speak for themselves, is what we agreed at the first public hearing, unless council has any, uh, anything they want to consider further. Have the public hearing and vote on the resolutions as they are.
Did that carry? Did William's voice carry? William, we want to say it again, just in case.
Testing.
Go through for the, the people that are, um, listening virtually.
It did. I hear it perfectly virtually.
Okay, okay.
Okay, she hears you.
I was, I was saying that the resolutions are representative of what was decided by council at the first public hearing. So unless council has anything further they want to consider, we just have the public hearing and vote on the two resolutions.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution eight A.
Hold, hold on. Councilman. Councilman Vasquez, just, we're, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, but I appreciate the eagerness. We want to.
My middle.
We, we do, I, I heard that there was no one in the public who was signed up for open forum, but we do need to open it up for a public hearing on both items before we vote. And I just want to make sure and make clear for the record with William that there is no percentage increase in the millage rate this year. The, the resolution before council has no percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate.
Correct.
Okay, let's open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone, even if you haven't signed up and you wish to speak at public hearing, you're welcome to come up and speak to us. Erica, could you double check to see if there's anyone virtually?
There's nobody. There's no one.
Okay. No one wants to speak on item eight A? Alright, and then we'll have the public hearing for item eight B. Anyone wishing to speak on that? Please feel free to come forward. No one virtually, Erica?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, this closes the public hearing. Now I'll accept the motion.
Through the chair. Motion to approve Resolution eight A.
Second, ma'am.
Any discussion? Okay. Call the vote. Vice Mayor Best?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fajet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the second one is a motion, I, I need a motion to approve Resolution eight B.
Motion to approve Resolution eight B.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Best?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fajet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell? Yes. The motion carries. Okay, thank you. We're gonna go now to, um, item seven A and B, reports from boards and commissions. And item seven A is a board update by Eric Ritchie, Chair of the Parks and, and Parkway's Advisory Board. Is Eric here tonight? Eric, I recognize you back there behind the mask.
Hello.
Good evening. Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor, Council, how are you guys doing? Um, I'm glad to be here tonight. My, what I'm going to do, I guess is to tell you what, what the board does, what it's, some of what it's done, and to, to show you sort of how it functions, so. Can I, do I have to keep this on?
You can take it off. And if you want, also pull the mic closer to you. That'll help.
Okay. Um, alright, so, the charge of the Board of Parks and Parkway's is the protection of the tree canopy of Miami Springs. That which makes us distinct, that which defines us in many ways, is the tree canopy. So, in the, in the process of doing that, we, about, I don't know, twenty-five years ago or so, I don't remember, but we, with the, with, we assisted Marcos Yura and Jan Seiden to write the Tree Protection Ordinance, which is now part of the city. And, um, the whole purpose of it is the, the protection of, of the trees, of course. And in that is a mitigation process for residents who choose, want to take a tree down. They are allowed to do that if Public Works says they can. And they have to mitigate with the city to create what we call a potential equivalency of canopy. So if they take a big tree down, then they might have to place within, certainly within that area, two or three trees that will grow to that, that much protection. And the cost of that is sometimes, you know, formidable, but we, we've been doing it for twenty-five years, so it works. And one of the, one of the problems we have with our canopy is that we have not recovered, believe it or not, from Hurricane Andrew. We got hurt really bad then, and we've been hurt since then as well. But that's why it's so important for council to continue to include in the budget as much as you can for planting new trees. And we do it once a year, we've just done it, you can, there's some new oaks on Curtis Parkway, you may have seen. One of the other things we did in, in protection, we, we had a meeting with F, we actually had two meetings with FPL about their their handling of cutting around the, the wires. They, they cut around. They, they cut around the, the highest wire is the electrical wire. The wires underneath are everything else, telephone, cable, and so forth. So, in a kind of a bartering session with them, and this place was packed that night because you know what FPL is capable of doing. To trees. I mean, they can just devastate the neighborhood. So, we kind of bartered with them a little bit and they agreed to a fifteen-foot corridor around the lines. So, you go back fifteen feet and you, and then you have to go to. National Arbists Association acceptable cut. In other words, hat wrecking is not, we can't do that. We can't just go back fifteen feet and cut. We gotta go back to a place that's safe to cut, so. FPL kinda got us on that one because they, you know, they could go back way further than fifteen feet in order to be safe for the tree. So anyway, that was a, I think that was a good thing that we did there and, you know, it, it still works as far as I know. So the. The, the parks and the parkways of Miami Springs are filled with trees. And there's specifications for what size tree has to be put in a certain place. That has to be, it's an ancient term, but it's called DBH. It's the diameter at chest level. Breast level, sorry. And. And it has to be a certain size and the city adheres to it and they make residents adhere to it too. So that's, that's a big part of the, of the, of the protection ordinance. So when issues arrive, either the council gives us issues that, that they want us to deal with. Or we ourselves initiate what we think is an issue and then we advise council on that. That's all we do is advise. Sometimes members want to take on more responsibility than that, but we don't have that. We just advise and, and frequently is when we're asked to advise. As a matter of fact, currently, I'd like to commend as our minutes should show. Counselperson Bravo for her request from us to look at the things that you think should be looked at in various parts of the city. And we have already begun as of our last meeting and want you to know that we will continue to do everything we can to. You know, reach some form of satisfaction for you that you see that we address the issue as, as you, you know, that you would want. One of the, the last things I'll say about the board and then we, and anybody can come to a board meeting, but nobody, nobody ever comes to me. Maybe a spouse. But the other issue, the other thing that we do is the yard of the month. We started it back about two years ago. We fell back a little bit because of the coronavirus, obviously. We didn't, nobody met, so we couldn't do the things we do. So we go out, we find the yards that we think are, you know, deserving. We meet, we recommend them, they become recommended from each member picks one per month. Every, what used to be five months. And then we, we nominate them to you and then you decide if they're worthy. And I'm sure that for the most part, you just say, okay, we agree with you guys because we know you, you're doing the best that you can. And we are, and we, we, and there's, there are more yards deserving than we can possibly credit. Because there's so many more, there's so many beautiful homes in Miami Springs. And we try to keep it moving around too. It's not as easy to do because sometimes we get lazy and we look in our own neighborhoods instead of driving out around. We all retired guys, you know, we got plenty of time, so we just look at, look at the obscure places. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask, answer them. I, I, I assume that what this is, because this has never happened before. I've never done this before. And I've been on the board for almost forty years, I think. And. I assume that you just want to make sure that the boards have something to do and are doing it. And I can assure you.
And also that we want to make sure that if you feel that there's ways that we can help you, we can help the boards. That you have all of our ears at one time and let us know how we can help make your job easier.
Well, I thank you. I work, I frequently work with. Well, now William, I work with his department more than anything other, you know, including that covers Public Works. But I have had a really, really good relationship with Public Works since Jack Dewhurst was mayor. So, we were, you know, we're, we're, we're simpatico, I guess you'd say.
I think he's, he's only touched the surface of what. Because he, I mean, you forgot one of your other greater accomplishments is the work you did on Morningside Drive.
Oh, well, that was just, that was just me wanting to do something. But we put the little.
Coral rocks.
Yes.
Coral rock, yeah. It's not.
Very nice.
Not Michelangelo, but you know.
Madam Chair, better than what was there before.
Yes, Councilman Vasquez.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much first and foremost. We felt that we talked about this a few months ago and, and all of us felt strongly that, first of all, we needed to show our support. In a more direct way, so as chair, you, you are, you are, you are here in part because of that. And to also convey to your members our appreciation for the work that you do. Volunteerism is a great char, great part of the character, American character. And it's important that folks are volunteering their time, even though you're retired, volunteering your time to do this very important task. And keeping the city looking beautiful. So, I want to thank you and all the members of, of, of your board for the work that you do. And for your presence here today. The other point that I wanted to emphasize is that in addition to showing our support and also. That you and your members feel that you're supported by us and that we are interested in hearing, not just the, you know, the minutes, those are important. But, but that, that continuous communication that we also have opportunities to ask you. And, and the boards, you know, I know it's, where this is COVID, right? So, everything's been different for the last year and a half and hopefully not for the next year and a half. But also, you know, to get a sense from, from the board and you, as you look forward, right? What are the, you know, with the next year, what are the kinds of things that you, you don't have to answer all this now, but I'm just saying. You know, what are, what are the issues or things that are, that are coming that we should be aware of and that you might need our support? It's very interesting that you mentioned FPL. When was that meeting? Was that some time ago?
My goodness.
Okay.
My daughter, who's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's gotta be a bit. I don't remember.
It was a long time ago, but they were chopping trees, Jen.
And, and I think that that was an important meeting to have and to, and, and so those are discussions that we need to.
Not to interrupt you, but there.
No, no, go ahead.
There, there were people here that night, there were two people who were in tears. Talking to FPL because of what had happened to their, you know, their, their homes.
Well, and, and, thank you. And, and the other thing was, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure I got the minutes. I haven't seen them yet. So, Councilwoman Bravo, I'm not sure what the things, what you asked them to look at. But I, I'd sure like, and I'll go back and look at the minutes, what those were. It's, it's good for us to know, right?
Presented in a meeting.
Yes, I have it here. It's a list of items, but now I see how you function as a board. So now I'll take a different approach and maybe I can reach through all those. I don't know what the formalities are. If I can reach out directly to him to let him know maybe the items that I was looking into or ideas that I have. But it's, it's also, I want to hear your suggestions because you have obviously the.
Well, I, I, I would rather not speak for the board. I'd rather the board speak if, if perhaps you could meet with us.
Okay.
And we would go over, we went over, we went over all of it at our last meeting. And we prioritize the things that we thought we could, you know, respond to quickly. And tabled some of the others because we, we need to go out and take a look, you know, specifically. The, I thought the, one of the best things you offered was the area across from the driving range on Curtis. When you first split, when, when Curtis first split.
Right.
The median begins, you know? And we've been talking about that for a long, long time. And I know Mayor Mitchell is big about when you come into the springs, you know, the entry points, what he's seeing. And that's, that's probably, other than coming over the bridge from Hialeah, is probably the biggest entry in the spring, I would think. And we, we got the. I shouldn't be doing this, but we got the, the. The Phoenix Robalini on the other, there's two, there's the plaque and then there was the symmetrical plantings on either side. And it's died twice and it's dead now and gone, so that needs to, I don't know if you get down that way that often, but.
I, I just wanted to mention something that the years that I've been on the council and Eric is so on top of the city all the time. I've gotten calls from him all the, not all the time, but often of just saying that he noticed something needs watering in a certain area of the city. And he's watching the whole city.
That's because the county wasn't watering.
By the pump station.
Yes.
Right. And very often it is that it's the counties were supposed to water it, but I, I know, you know, often you've texted me and said, I was just by this area. And you know, this is not looking good. And, and so you're constantly watching you and all the board members. As if it was your own private yard, which I know is beautiful, your, your yard. I've seen it. I'm, I'm saying that because I know it. But it's, it's, we're very much appreciate that you are our eyes and ears for, for, for our canopy. For the beauty of Miami Springs, for not just the, the tree canopy, for the plantings, so much of it. And for the signs and so many other things, beautification of Morningside and so many other things.
Eric, before you go any further on that entrance by the driving range. Let's get together and see what area you're talking about. Remember that large triangle area of us vacant there. A council about a couple of years ago worked out for the Eastern Four One Memorial. And they were doing fundraising.
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm a huge supporter of that. So we, we would not, we, as a matter of fact, we talked about that saying basically what you said. We can't landscape there until we get a decision as to whether or not we're gonna put the sculpture in. And I think it would, I mean, I don't know how other people feel about it, but I, I feel.
Well, they're, 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 they have the land. They're just fundraising now. They showed me the latest plans that they have and all that, so as soon as I have the money, I'm probably gonna move on it, but I don't know when that's gonna be.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor, can we let?
I, I didn't mean to throw it on. Just, just two quick things, Mr. Chair. And, and this is not to add to any more meetings or anything like that, but you know, whenever you come before us, it's okay, you know, invite your members. It'd be great. If they could come, but I want them to feel invited to these conversations. And also that I hope that I'm looking forward, you guys are looking forward to the work that's gonna happen on Royal Point Ciana. And, and the development that's gonna take place there. And your input, I know it's gonna be very important because that's another important.
We've discussed that.
Entryway into the city.
Yeah.
Not just because I live there, but.
That's a neglected area. That, that little area, you know, east of East Drive is, I go over there. And I, I got a house for, House of the Month there once about a year ago and it was a lot of fun talking to the guy because he's never been approached before, you know?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eric, I, I don't know what to say, other than that's probably the best assessment of a board I've heard since I've been up, sitting up here.
Well, thank you, sir.
Of course, the board, such as adjustment and zoning and planning stuff, they, they have their own kind of automatic agendas. And there's no reason to really hear those. These are judgmental matters based on, on items that are brought in front of them. They're semi judicial in, in nature and what have you. But, but of all the years that I've known you in this town and I've known of your machinations of ecology and environmental matters and everything. Thanks, because you sure have stayed on top of it.
Thank you.
And, and you forgot one thing. I know William already brought up the Morningside. I'd like to bring up the Geiger Memorial and I know that was one hundred percent Eric Ritchie and that is one nice monument right there.
Yeah, we did, we did a good.
Did a phenomenal job and that's her.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we did, yeah.
Thanks for coming tonight, Eric, and thanks for your explanation on, on what Parks and Parkway does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bravo, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm helping you a little bit too, because I, I've made my own couple requests, starting with the Cavalier clock. We had a new greenery input by Public Works because we had a bunch of dried weeds and it's just such a beautiful clock. So I was, I was glad to see some of those changes made, so we have some fresh greenery there. But no, thank you for coming and I'll definitely keep in touch with you.
Good, that'd be great. We would love to have you come in and talk with us if you would.
Yes, and definitely all, all of us, you know, are free to attend any board meeting. I know I'm trying this year to attend every board meeting for the city, one of the meetings, you know, I, I've made it a goal to.
Well, it's not as hard now, right?
Attend.
There are fewer meetings.
There are fewer, yes, and sometimes they just happen to, it's like, you know, they don't meet every month and now some of them and it, and if you can't make it that night, if you, but I'm, you know. Right, but the, the board meeting, all of us are able to attend. Erica, is it automatically posted on there that, so that if more than two council members?
I would have to, I would have to know and post that on the notice.
Okay, so if you plan to go to a meeting, let Erica know so that she. But otherwise, if two council members show up there, it's just only one can talk.
Correct.
Any other one just doesn't talk and that would satisfy the sunshine law, okay? And Councilman Fahad, did you have anything?
I just wanted to thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you, sir.
You and the whole board member and just if no one else has anything, I just wanted to mention, Eric. And I'm not sure if I've talked to you about this, but I know I mentioned it to a few times with Tom Nash about. The Royal Point Ciana Boulevard, South Royal Point Ciana and North Royal Point Ciana Boulevards. To me, those, when you hear those names, they sound grand. You know, you expect these grand boulevards with Royal Point Cianas on them and they're few and far.
Been saying that for thirty years.
And I would love to see, and I know I spoke with Tom Nash, you know, maybe two or three years ago at length about it. And, you know, and, and he brought up points that I wasn't aware of. They're messy. The trees are messy. So people don't necessarily want them on their swale because they miss their cars, they miss their driveway. So it has to be kind of the placement is, you know, it's critical that it's in an area that it's not going to grow to cause a nuisance.
And, and then, that's one of the reasons that one of the hardest jobs in Miami Springs is Public Work Director. Because he's got a, he's got a, he's got two sides of every issue he deals with, you know, what the city wants, but what the resident wants. And I know Tom took beating after beating over that stuff, you know?
But I would like to request if, if the board could look at it at a way to when, as much as possible. If we can populate Miami Springs canopy with Royal Point Cianas. Because I really envision that as something, as a reason that in the summer months, people would even come to, to Miami Springs to drive around. And you know, they've got North Royal Point Ciana and South Royal Point Ciana and Royal Point Ciana is blooming all over the city. And I just think it would distinguish us from a lot of other cities. We already have some, but not as many as, as I, you know, think we could have. So perhaps if the board could look at that.
Okay.
Really appreciate it.
And I'd like to give one shout out, if I may. I can't say enough about Public Works. I've worked tight with everybody, you know, from, I can't even remember who was there first. And it was a huge, huge loss to me when, when we lost Tom. I, I just, he was the easiest, most wonderful guy to work with ever. And he was, and he did more as, in my opinion, he did more for the canopy of Miami Springs than any public works director ever. Including Maria Davis, who did an awful lot.
But we're very lucky now to have Lazaro and his staff and.
Yes, Laz is great.
You know, I know they're doing a fantastic job and they're here, so I wanted to shout out to you. It's a team effort. It's.
Yes, it is. Very cohesive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Eric, could you just stop by the desk? I have something for you here before you leave.
Okay, um, the next agenda item is a board report, an update from the ecology board. From the Chair of the Ecology Board, Wendy Anderson-Bohr. Is Wendy here? Hey, Wendy. So hard to recognize people in the audience with a mask on.
Hello, everyone. My name is Wendy Anderson-Bohr and I am the Chairman of the Ecology Board. I've been on the Ecology Board for a hot minute since like two thousand and seven or eight, so it's been a while. Finally moved up to Chair. It only took me. Finally moved up to Chair. It only took me 10 years, but I'm there. Um, so the Ecology Board, over the years, we've done lots of projects throughout the city. Um, we try to educate, um, people in our community about ways that they can help preserve the ecology better. You know, we try to give tips on recycling, gardening. You know, one of our big things we're working on for a long time was trying to do a community garden. Um, that was on, around, we were working with that for a couple of years, maybe three, but then obviously the pandemic started, so that got pushed way to the side. But we also used to host rain barrel workshops. We have the people coming from the recycling, uh, from Dade County to come talk with us. Um, hold on, let me see, look at my notes. Let's see, and right now we are talking about pest management, but obviously Public Works does an excellent job. They use no pesticides throughout our city, so we are free and clear on that. Um, and like right now, we're working on tips for home gardening as well as, you know, recycling. So we push stuff out like in the Gazette sometimes and also like on our Facebook, social media pages as well as Instagram and Twitter. So. Any questions?
Thank you.
Good chair?
Yes. Good, good. How's Catherine? Good?
Oh, yeah, she's good. Yeah, she's good.
Um, okay, so I had a question, because I did review your minutes on the last meeting. Can you elaborate a little bit more on the home gardening tips?
Yeah, it's, um, so we have a couple of members on our, on our board, um, that are really into gardening. And they just want to like give tips to our neighborhood, like to our community about, you know, how the best ways to maybe like instead of using like store bought for like natural compost and stuff like that. That's kind of where I'm.
Then my second question on the same meeting was tips on, um, attracting or feeding like migrating birds. There was something in the respects to that and I.
That came up, but that got pushed till the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I.
Yeah, that, that we didn't, we didn't discuss that in length at all.
Yeah, because I can see where that can become, um, it's a beautiful thing. We are a bird sanctuary, but I can see where it can become a nuisance if people are not doing it right. Um, maybe, you know, limiting, uh, one bird feeder, maybe in a certain part of your yard, but I can see, I mean, I've got a lot of complaints and it's become a big issue, especially with the ducks and stuff. So I just want to Yeah, so that's something I'm going to be working on in the future. I'm working on it now to, you know, to protect our birds and to protect our ducks, because at the end of the day, they're, uh, creating habits because of us, not because of them. So, um, that's in the works, but I just wanted to, to see where.
Oh, yeah, I, it was like a very limited discussion from what I recall. Our meeting was pretty short. It was like 16 minutes, maybe 22. So it did not get discussed in length at all. So just heads up. So we're gonna.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, but you know, I think we're going to discuss it next time, our next meeting. We meet bi monthly, so it'll be in November. Oh, yeah, no, the ducks, I understand the duck situation.
I have a pigeon situation, so.
Yeah, I have a duck situation as well.
But, and you know, and you know, and I know somebody approached me today about raccoons, you know, and, and wanting to control raccoons and, um, you know, we, we need to keep in mind too, that they're just trying to share the environment with us. You know, it's, it's not their fault that their environment keeps getting smaller and smaller and they're trying to survive. So, you know, we kind of have to, to think about that. And I know they're pests sometimes and they can be a nuisance, all of these, you know, and the iguanas too, but.
But they're a part of our.
You know, but they're, they really are, and they keep our ecosystem. They keep, give us diversity and, you know, it's kind of like, I see it as a personal thing when somebody has a nuisance that they have to kind of, um, figure out how to minimize it, but keep in mind that, you know, they have every right to be here too. They're part of nature and, um, um, and, and they do keep our environment balanced and, you know, just people living here without any, uh, flora or fauna would be a pretty sad state.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, we definitely, I mean, oh, that was one of the other things we were doing before the pandemic. We were trying to promote like, um, the restaurants, like the eco-friendly restaurants for the takeaways. We were doing that for literally like two months and then COVID happened. So then that, we stopped that too.
Oh, I remember. And Wendy, that was going to be to encourage the restaurants to like not use plastic bags, not use styrofoam too. That's, that's a wonderful, yes.
We're gonna.
So I hope you'll be able to, to revisit that.
Yes, that would definitely be a great idea to bring it back. A hundred percent. Another thing that I was gonna talk about at our next meeting, um, because my sister, you know, she works somewhere else, but she was telling me about a, a biodegradable doggy for the doggy mess, like in, in the dispensers, you know, in our dispensers, like that the rotary, I think the rotary doesn't, I don't know. Anyways, they offer a biodegradable product now. So instead of just putting it in the trash and just wasting in the landfills, eventually they could, you know, biodegrade. So that's something else we're thinking about. So.
All right. And I know you mentioned that our city is, which this is something that our city started doing a few years ago and, and, um, Lazarus, you can probably speak to that, but that we have, we practice integrated pest control management, right, which is, um, not using pesticides, using, trying to use other methods of sealing, um, openings throughout the buildings, monitoring, setting out, uh, traps to see if there's an infestation and, um, instead of, of just randomly going in and spraying the buildings with, you know, the, um, the old fashioned way that, um, just to keep the pest out, right? So I think that's, that's a great, um, method that the city has been using now for a few years, which is really great.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Ecology Board, very excited about that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi.
Madam Chair, thank you for coming. And again, thank you for your work and, and for all the work that the members do on the Ecology Board. I think the discussion around the ducks is very significant, because, uh, we share a block on the, on daily on between the Boulevard and Morningside. I say we share a block because there's quite a few of them. I, I love having them there. I mean, that's the essential meaning of ecology is that interaction between all, between all of us and, uh, and I really get upset when I see one lying on the street. Just breaks my heart. So I'm, I'm glad you, you brought that up. And again, as I was saying earlier to, um, uh, Chairman Ritchie is that, uh, we, we want to make sure that we're getting from you, that you're getting from us the support and the, any general direction that we can, that we can offer, but also to hear from you more about, you know, as you guys continue to meet on a regular basis, I hope to attend the next meeting.
Oh, for sure.
Uh, and, uh, and, and also, uh, you know, to your projections and the kinds of things that you see. Um, I was reading, I also read the minutes and I appreciated the, uh, PowerPoint that was sent to us from the county about recycling. So I don't think we could say enough about this. Um, it clarified for me something very important. Um, and I think it would for lots of residents, just a reminder of what can be recycled and what should not be recycled. So thank you again for, uh, for the work that you're doing. I appreciate you coming here.
My pleasure.
And if we have another session like this, feel free to invite your other members.
All right, yeah, I'm sure they would love to join.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, thanks a lot, Wendy, for coming tonight.
Wanted you to know you have our full support, you and, and the board members. We appreciate everything you do. Sometimes it seems like the boards have been operating in parallel to the city council and, and, you know, the purpose of us asking, um, the boards to come once a year and, and they can come some more than that, but at least once a year is just so that, you know, we connect and that, you know, you have our full support and, um, we're interested in the work you do. We want to know how we can, anything we can do to further, um, the, the, the board's efforts, please, you know, let us know.
Oh, for sure.
Here for you. And, um, also anything, and, and I think I have the council's consent on this, that, um, you know, anything that you see, ways that the city itself, ways that we can be more sustainable, more resilient, um, reduce our environmental footprint, help the environment, um, you know, let us know. Let, reach out to one of us or to our city manager with your recommendations, so we can look into it further.
It's for sure. Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Okay, so the next agenda item will move to consent agenda, and we don't have anything. We don't have any old business under item, um, agenda item 11, we have new business and we have two resolutions. Resolution A, 11A, William?
11A.
This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, adopting the fine, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Right? Sorry, there you go. Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, approving a professional services agreement with Bell Tower Consulting Group LLC for grant writing services in an amount not to exceed $36,000 for an initial one-year term with up to a four-year, one-year terms, providing for a waiver of competitive bidding, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date. This is a recommendation to adopt the attached resolution, waiving the competitive bid process in the best interest of the city's, pursuant to section 31 E6G of the city code and approving an agreement with Bell Tower Consulting Group LLC for an initial one-year term with the option to renew uh, for grant writing services. Funds for the services were budgeted in the fiscal year 2021 budget. And this requires a waiver of competitive bid must be passed by a fourth, fifth vote, um, majority of the city council. Would you like me to read the discussion?
Um, yes, please, if you don't mind. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, please.
The city has not had a grant writer since the retirement of the city's full-time employee in February 2016, whose ending salary was $74,882. During the city's 202021 budget workshop, we discussed the importance and need for a grant writer to assist the city in finding potential funding sources and opportunities to achieve the city's strategic goals for both current and proposed services, programs, operations, and future construction projects. For the fiscal year 2122 budget, $70,000 was budget, budgeted to hire a full-time employee with benefits to provide these services. After further consideration and analysis, it is recommended by the city to hire an outside consultant, which will provide the same services and save the city approximately $34,000. In September 2021, the city manager and the assistant city manager virtually met with Ms. Lakeisha Morris Moreau, President and CEO of Bell Tower. Bell Tower's services were highly recommended by the Town Manager of Cutler Bay, Mr. Rafael Casais. As a result of her success and Bell Tower's success, track record of securing and administering grants and other special projects for the town of Cutler Bay. Ms. Moret, Morris Moreer founded Bell Tower and has assisted other municipalities such as the town of Cutler Bay, North Bay Village, City of North Miami Beach, Village of Miami Shores and Hollendale Beach in securing and administering over $90 million in funding for the parks and recreation improvements, drainage and roadway, roadway projects as well as stormwater projects. She has over 18 years of experience in grant writing and grant management. And in 2016, Lakeisha earned the Grant Professional Certified credential from, from the Grant Professional Certification Institute. The GPC is the first professional credential for individuals working in the grants field to be recognized by the National Commission for Certifying Agencies. Bell Tower is prepared to offer the city a wide range of services, including but not limited to the strategic planning, funding research, grant writing, policy and procedure development, loan applications, funding agency coordination, post award management and preparation for funding agency monitoring visits. See proposal exhibit A3 to the agreement. The city manager recommends approving an agreement with Bell Tower for their standard consulting servants, services at $3,000 per month, which provides up to 10 grant writing services per year. If in the future additional services are needed, the services can be modified to their deluxe or premium packages, or the city may take advantage of the hourly rates based on tasks as provided in Bell Tower's price proposal. See exhibit A2 to the agreement.
And, um, further to that, um, Lakeisha is here tonight, in case, uh, council was any, uh, questions of her, uh,
Hello, welcome. Could you come up to the podium, please?
And, uh, she, she, uh, as I mentioned, the memo, she came highly recommended from Alpha's House of Cutler Bay, who, uh, I've known for years. Uh, she's also done work with Miami Shores and North Miami Beach. So, um, when they heard through the budget process that we were looking for a grant writer, uh, they were recommended to us. And she's also done work with Heidi. Uh, because Heidi's also the, uh, city attorney for Cutler Bay. So they're very familiar with each other.
And North, and in North Bay Village, Lakeisha has done a great job for, for both cities. I, I was familiar with her work first in Cutler Bay. Um, and then, uh, we now have the opportunity, even though I'm not really working with Cutler Bay anymore. Uh, my responsibilities have led me elsewhere. Uh, Lakeisha is, is also doing great work and has done so for many, many years in North Bay Village. So, uh, pull it, counsel proceed with that.
Thank you.
It's through the chair. Did I, did I hear, uh, ma'am, that you were also involved in Hallandale Beach?
Yes.
During Joy Cooper's administration?
Yes.
She's a good friend of mine.
Yes. Under Joy Cooper's administration, and now I still do some work with them on a project needed basis. And I've been writing with Hallandale Beach. It's been about four years now.
Interesting. Good. Well, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Any other questions from the council to the chair?
Yes.
Uh, thank you for being with us today. Um, I, I, I follow the page of, uh, Cutler, is it Cutler Bay? And they do beautiful projects. I think they just came up with a new park and it's just a lot of things are happening down there. So I'm really glad um, that we can have you on board. I just had one question and, um, as far as the, the terms of the contract. William, I'm sorry, I couldn't clarify this earlier. Or it says one-year term with up to four-year option. With that, up to four-year option also include the up to 10 grant writings as well for every year?
Yes.
Okay.
The base package, the $3,000 flat a month, it's 10 grants that I write throughout the month and that's attending the meetings, go representing you all, preparing for presentations, whatever it takes. Oh, you want me to, I'm sorry. Doing, going to your meetings, um, writing the grant, of course, during the research. Um, doing the resolutions, if you need me to do resolutions for you all, providing the checklist, working with your designee to get those grants written and approved, which is my favorite part. Getting those grants approved for you. And then each year it would start over. Thank you.
Other questions? Did you have any?
Um, no, just want to comment about, uh, first of all, very impressed with your credentials and the work that you've done. Um, if you join us, we will definitely be giving you a lot of work, because we are, we are eager to get numerous grants written. Uh, so, uh, I trust that William will be on it with the rest of his team, uh, because we do need this. Um, the, it's very difficult, as you know, in this, in this work to, to get an exclusive person uh, i- 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 in, on, on board. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a very highly qualified area. And, um, so, you know, we are, we are looking for, uh, folks who are up to that challenge. We're a little city, but we got big dreams.
I can tell. I started, I was listening to your meeting and just jotting down ideas and things as I heard you all speak. So I look forward to working with the manager, working with the assistant city manager to get a grant plan for you.
We don't play.
I don't think she does either.
I have a few questions. The, um, so the terms are, uh, 3,000 a month and then that includes up to 10 grant writings per year.
Yes.
So how does that work? Say, when you apply for a grant and you're going to help us identify grants, you would work like if there's something that we're looking for grants for, say, just throwing this out there, playground equipment, you would help us identify grants that might be, um, well-suited, um, for us. Um, but how would that work? Say, if you're applying for the grant and we're in the process of waiting to hear from the grant and then the, your, uh, contract is up, the year contract is up, how does that work if we're, do we have to renew the contract or we just wait? Work if we're, do we have to renew the contract or we just wait for the approval? I'm just curious as to those kind of situations.
Well, if I'm writing, if I write the grant for you, then if I'm in the process of writing the grant and we're toward the end of the contract, I'm going to complete writing the grant. I'm not going to stop working. Because we have to um, work on the contract. If I start that during our contract period, I'm going to complete the work. All the way through. And what usually happens, like I said, you all already started talking about different things that you want, so I started writing down grant ideas. The manager, he talked about some of his ideas when we had our meeting, so I wrote those things down and what I'll do is I'll take your ideas and the different projects that you have. I'll provide you all with a list of the grants that we would like to go after and the things that we would need to do to make sure that we're grant ready. So that we can put ourselves in the best position to get that grant funding and we'll start working through those. And let's say there's the project, for example, you might want to go after a Firdapp grant for a park. The open period is like two weeks. It opens on October first and it closes on the fourteenth. I don't think they want people to apply this year. They've never had such a short period. And if we do that, there's a lot of different points that we need to hit to be competitive, but maybe we're not ready yet. We we don't have a plan quite yet. We might need to wait until the next funding cycle. And we'll have that conversation to let you know. I'll always tell you, these are the points that we can get. This is where I think we're going to come in. And let you all make the decision whether you want to go after it anyway, or kind of hold off until we're a little more grant ready.
And the cities that the this page on here where it's the hourly rate, then this is if we weren't to do the contract for the three thousand net, if you were to go with the hourly rate.
Yes.
Um, the cities that um, this list of cities. They're now used as a reference. Um, Miami Shores, North Bay, Town of Cutler Bay, Hollendale Beach, my city Miami, North Miami Beach. Um, uh, city Cape Coral, do they generally have that kind of contract with you or they work per hour?
Yes, I have, it will be, if you all come aboard, it will be Miami Springs. Cutler Bay is on the retainer rate, Miami Shores is on the retainer rate, North Bay Village, they were on the retainer, but now they're on the hourly rate.
Okay, that's a lot of grants to write, period, when you have so many city, you have help?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I have help. I oversee all of the grants. I'm the primary contact for the manager. I review everything that goes out of the door, but I do have hope. I do have a team, yes.
Okay, um. One second, I think I had. Another question and usually the. The grants, I saw the this list of examples of grant um, writing and administration efforts um, that you have for these different. Projects, um. I would have liked to see what cities these are for, because it says the awarding entity, but it's not necessarily what cities therefore, so we could get an idea, but um. I think uh, from everything I know from uh, ninety million in grant funding since you were started, it's um. Uh, very impressive and and I think what um. What impressed me the most was here, um, where you said your um. Uh, your ROI is for every dollar spent about a hundred and sixty six dollars, so I think that um. That tells us that this is certainly for the cost, it's it's um, a worthwhile investment and we very, very much appreciate. You um, working with our city and helping us. There's so many projects like Councilman Vasquez. Said that, you know, that we'd like to get done in the city and and we do need the grant um, assistance in order to be able to complete them. So, any other questions?
No ma'am. With your permission through the chair, I'd like to make a motion that we pass uh, resolution eleven A.
Second.
Second it. More discussion, call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Bahad.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell. Yes, the motion carries.
All right.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now she can start working on.
Don't go too far. Expect the report within the hour.
Oh, next agenda item, um, where are we here?
Eleven B.
Eleven B.
Eleven B, yes.
Yeah.
Eleven B is a resolution of Mayor City Council of the city. Authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Florida Department of Transportation. раны и транспортные services, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from FDOT if awarded. Authorizing the purchase of vehicles or equipment and or expenditure of grant funds for joint or grant awards and divided for an effective day. Um, this is for a new bus. And we have like, uh, the rotary bus. The rotary bus for this grant themselves a few years ago. Now we want to get along with city once the five for a grant. But what we have now currently, uh, we have a left that's not working, so we actually have the grant. Uh, a bus with a real. Um, so uh, following this one, I think the date is October.
October fourth is the due date. Lakeisha is gonna hit the ground running.
Goodness.
We're already, we're already helping uh, families helping with some of the. My applications, but uh, we still need to review and go on the right track, but uh, that's what's at support.
And we'll keep using the rotary bus?
Yes.
So we'll have.
We'll have two.
Two buses, okay, and that's just to pick up and transfer people from uh, Miami Springs. Turn to and and BG to the senior center. Do this, does the community center, does the rec center use these buses at all?
The community center has their own buses.
Have their own, okay, so these aren't just exclusively for the senior center?
Yes.
Right. Need a motion?
Motion to.
Motion to uh, approve resolution eleven B, second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, Vice Mayor Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo, yes, Councilman Bahad.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell, yes, the motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, so and um, Laz and Miss Flint is who's here from Public Works. I know so many of these things that we talk about. Fall ultimately, you know, on uh, you're doing all the work behind the scenes to to keep the city running, so I just wanted to thank you and. With the boards, what they're talking about too. I know so many times, you know, it falls back on um, great ideas need to be carried out and. You and your staff are the ones that do it, so we really appreciate it. Okay, so um, other business. Update on the nuisance abatement board, item uh, twelve A.
This uh, this report up to this, you know, we did uh, originally set up the nuisance abatement board ordinance. Um, we had a, an option there to use the code enforcement board or a special magistrate. At that time it was uh, decided to, we go with the special magistrate, but based on uh, the fact that uh. We don't know how many cases the public agency board is going to have, uh, unfortunately they're going to need. Uh, we wanted to propose that uh, in case, the case comes up for the public reason. Have the code enforcement board sick as the. What is it called, the paper? Uh, and if you see that uh, cases is for pickup, you can aggression going with a special magistrate later on. But uh, we feel that for now.
Um, through the chair, uh, uh, Mr. Manager, I uh, I fully concur with your thinking on this. Um, I all along have always. Wondered why we needed another board that code enforcement couldn't handle. But in lieu of that, the suggestion you're making right now, I'm fully in concurrence with. I don't think you're gonna have that many issues with a nuisance abatement board. And it'd just be my thought.
Through through the chair, I and and Heidi, maybe you can, you can chime in. My understanding was that. Uh, we aren't allowed by by some overarching state statute to to use the magistrate for nuisance abatement, right? And then I think at a previous meeting, we talked about having a magistrate over uh, code enforcement. And then we talked about, you know, uh, how we would populate the nuisance abatement. Given that a magistrate would take over the responsibilities for new for code enforcement, is that or code compliance, correct?
That's all correct. So the ordinances for both code compliance or code enforcement board and the nuisance abatement board. Provide the council with the ability to pivot in the event that you choose to use an alternate. So what I mean by that is for the code enforcement board. If at some point, whether related to the nuisance abatement board or not. If at some point the council felt that it would be best to proceed with having a special magistrate, your ordinance already provides you with that authority. So you would be able to very quickly pivot to a magistrate. Similarly, the nuisance abatement board ordinance uh, provides. Two options, you can either have the code enforcement board serve at in the role of the nuisance abatement board, so they would sort of have a dual role. Or you can um, you can appoint. A separate nuisance abatement board to sit separately from the code enforcement board. And the reason that we had done that was, as you probably recall. Was we anticipated that there may be a significant number of nuisance cases and that we didn't want to overwhelm the code enforcement board or a magistrate. Uh, well, we couldn't use a magistrate for nuisance, but we wouldn't want to overwhelm the code enforcement board with uh, uh, an influx of nuisance cases. So I think the the recommendation right now is in light of what we see as the numbers on potential nuisance cases. The recommendation uh. From from administration is to let the code enforcement board serve in both capacities. If at some point we find that we have way too many nuisance cases to. For for them to handle on their own, we can pivot, appoint the nuisance abatement board as a standalone board. If you'd like, you could use the same members of the code enforcement board um, or not, it's up to you, you have that discretion. And then we would have, uh, we would hire a magistrate to handle the code cases.
And uh, one other question, uh, I think we had also discussed uh, potential problems. It it doesn't seem now like there are a lot of. At the, you know, knock on wood, a lot of nuisance abatement uh, issues coming before. The city, but it it would have to be a separate meeting, correct, for code enforcement? And if they did it the same night, they would have to like close down their meeting and open another meeting. Uh, is that correct? And I think there was also an issue, I'm sorry, one follow up question. I think I just want to clarify as we go to talk, I'm trying to like refresh it in my mind and then just out loud. I think there was also the issue that that code enforcement has seven people. And or there was a incongruence in the number of people on the two boards?
That's correct. So so yes, uh, procedurally, there would be two separate meetings. Um, similar to the way that you have your um, board of adjustment meetings that. It's the same board sitting in both capacities. They start one meeting and it and then they start another meeting. Um, and it's just back to back, so it would be similar in that sense. Um, as far as the code enforcement board, I think you have a seven member board with two alternates, so you have a total of nine, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and so the nuisance board has, I believe we said it as a five member board. So if you were to uh, we said it as a five member board, if you were to appoint. An independent board. If you're going to use the code enforcement board, it would be the same group of people, so you wouldn't have that cap of five.
Okay, thank you. That that answers the questions. I'm I just for the record, I'm I'm okay with uh, with following the recommendation of of the staff.
Any other questions?
Councilman Vasquez. I I have a procedural question. I'm just trying to clear my mind. Um. How would this work? Just trying to clear my my head. How would this work and who would make the decision? At a particular moment that either the compliance board is overwhelmed or.
I think, I think that.
I'm just trying to get clear.
Well, I think since the board members, we appoint the board members for the compliance board, the first. Uh, contact would be when there is, should a nuisance abatement issue come up? We would ask the ahead of time, the uh, code compliance board, you know, we have this, we'd like to hand for you to handle both. And should there be an issue that, you know, this is happening too often, I. Then we would consider the, you know, that it's becoming overwhelming, the inordinate amount of work for them. But right now, um, there they do a phenomenal job for us, the code compliance board, um, all the members appointed there. Um, uh, you know, the amount of time that they spend and and the 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 level of um, I would say. The level of detail that they look at uh, at these issues, you know, and really consider it and try to do what's best for the residents and the resident who's coming before them. And also for the community and and you know, Miami Springs as a whole, um, is is really appreciated, so. Right now they would continue to function like that and should that come up, that issue, uh, we'd ask them to handle the nuisance abatement board, but it gives us. Like Heidi said, we can pivot that down the road, should all of a sudden this become and you know, everything in the city, sometimes we have a lot of something and then it it kind of dies down, so. In the future, we've kind of set the groundwork so that we can handle both things. We can continue as it is, but should. You know, it become too numerous, which hopefully it won't of nuisance abatement. Um, issues, then we have the ability to just very quickly move into that and handle that, um, you know, um, with the magistrate.
What I would add, Mayor, is that right now, I mean, assuming that council goes with the recommendation, I think the next step. Would be for the manager, city clerk to send uh, an informational update to the board, letting them know that. Uh, pursuant to this ordinance, they'll be serving in this dual capacity and right now there are no cases that are scheduled to come before them. Uh, but just giving them the heads up. And then if at some point, uh, working with the chief and William, uh, we find, we realize that. We suddenly have a ton of cases, we'll certainly bring that to your attention. I don't expect that to be the case. Um, this isn't something that is necessarily going to pop up overnight. Um, I I certainly, that's not my expectation and I don't think it's the chief's either. Um, so I I think we'll have plenty of advance notice before we have even one case to bring before the board. I don't think uh, procedurally um, that we will want to be bringing, you know, ten cases at once. Especially at the beginning, so I I don't see it being an overwhelming amount.
No.
The chair.
So just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Follow up on that. Um, so uh, the the board has not been a prize of our discussions yet and this is. This would have to be approved tonight and then that information, I just want to make be clear that they're gonna be asked to. Take on additional responsibility if needed, right? I guess that reminds me of my HR, that bottom line on job description and other duties as assigned. Used to fall in there, um, but um, uh, should we approve this tonight, then they would immediately be informed of. The expectation of of these things. Is that clear? Is that is that right, counselor?
That's correct. Uh, through the chair, would that also, um, counselor, would that also uh, necessitated change in the? Um, the the code of ordinances relative to the responsibility of the code enforcement board relative to our decision, uh, were we to take it tonight?
No, like like I mentioned earlier, um, your ordinance for both code enforcement and nuisance abatement. Already provides you with the ability to pivot if needed, so your code ordinance, your code enforcement board ordinance. Uh, permits you to use either a code enforcement board like you have or utilize the services of a special magistrate. The nuisance.
So no change would be necessary in writing then?
No, it would just be a matter of doing the appointment.
And advising the board, of course.
Of course, so everything more ministerial in action than than legislative.
Okay, thanks, Heidi.
Thank you. Heidi, how are you? You there? I had a question for you.
Less than thirty days out, possibly less.
Question, um, I know that we're gonna go ahead and contact our our current board, our code uh, compliance board, but let's just say that we. But let's just say that we have inconsistencies with having, uh, the current members commit to. The nuisance abatement board. Do we have a plan B? Cause what if maybe out of the seven, three, do they don't want to accept the responsibility? What do we do?
Yeah, you're gonna have that problem.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with the vice mayor. I don't know that we'll have that issue, but if we do, I think that's at that point where we need to. Either appointing people to the code enforcement board who would be willing to do it. And I don't know that that's something that is a practical solution. But it's an option, uh, or have pivot, as I mentioned, and utilize the services of a magistrate and then. Uh, appoint the nuisance abatement board separately, uh, either constituting it of people who are on the. Code enforcement board who wish to continue serving in this other role or with brand new people. So. Um, if you were to, uh, use the services of a special magistrate for code enforcement. You would essentially have your seven or nine people who are currently serving on the code enforcement board. Who are now not serving on that board because you have a magistrate. So any of those people could. In theory, be transitioned to this other board. You can also pick from any other member of the community who wishes to serve. Um, so I don't, i- if that's the case, you do have that option. Um. But again, I, I think the, the, what I would drive home. Is that right now, we don't have any cases that we anticipate filing a nuisance abatement case for. Um, that's not to say that we may not have a, a particularly, um. Exciting week, uh, you know, with the witching hour brewing and all of that, uh, to keep the theme going. Uh, but if we, if we do see something coming, we can certainly advise. You and the, the committee, the board rather, uh, so that they know that it's. It's, it's going to be coming. It won't catch my surprise.
Any other questions? Okay, call the vote, please. Oh, I need a motion. Motion.
We need a, a motion. Consider if you'd like to just.
Is it just consensus?
Yeah, consensus is fine that we go with the staff and, uh, the administration's recommendation to. Continue utilizing the services of the code enforcement board for code. Cases as well as, uh, utilizing the code enforcement board as the nuisance abatement board.
Okay. Anyone disagrees?
I'm, I'm in favor of that recommendation.
Favors, well, mayor.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. We're all in agreement. Um. Okay. So the next agenda item is, um, uh, reports and recommendations, and we'll start with our city attorney again.
So it's not often that I actually have a substantive report to give, uh, but as, as timing would have it, of course. Um, so I know many of you are, are new to what's considered an executive session. So in your agenda backup, you have a memo from me, uh, explaining what an executive session is. Basically, all of our meetings, like the one you're in right now, are open to the public. They're sunshine meetings. Uh, this is what, what I am requesting this evening, uh. Is what's known as a shade session, an executive session, an attorney client session. It is a time for myself. Uh, your litigation attorneys, uh, to meet with you with respect to ongoing pending litigation. And we need privately, we meet in an open session that is open to the public. Uh, frankly, nothing very exciting usually happens at that open session because you just call the meeting to order. And we make a few remarks saying that we're going to go into an executive session and then everyone exits the room. Except for the council, the manager and myself. And if we have special litigation council, they, uh, stay in the room with us. There's also a court reporter who stays in the room and transcribes. Every single word that is said, um, and creates a, a transcript, um, of the meeting. So what I'm requesting is that, and is that we have an executive session. And I'd like to request it in the case of the city of Miami Springs versus Runway Partners LLC. It's case number twenty twenty zero one nine eight seven two C eight oh one. That's Miami Dade County Circuit Court case number. Um, as most of you are familiar, last nearly a year ago, uh, this month. The city filed an action against Runway Partners to enjoin the nuisance that was occurring at the runway in Hotel. In light, because of the actions that we took, the runway in was shut down and has remained shut down for the last year. We have come to a point where we've had a few court hearings over the last year. Um, we've given status updates to the court. The runway in has taken actions that they need to take. Um, with the county to bring the building up to the fire code, uh, for violations that they had for fire. They've done updates for, to comply with the building code. And we're at the point that we are approaching, uh, we are trying to come to a settlement with them. So what I would like to do is have an executive session with you to discuss privately, um, as a group. What the terms of that settlement would be, uh, so that we can either, so that we can. Uh, consider that strategy and, and the settlement negotiations. Um, our discussions in an executive session are limited, uh, to strategy, to litigation strategy and settlement. So we, we don't get to talk about a whole lot of things, but we do get to discuss, uh, this litigation and resolving it. So. Um. My, the, our next, uh, court hearing is Thursday, November fourth. So I would like, if possible, to have an executive session. Um, if, if you're available either later this week or perhaps early next week. With the goal that if we can come to, um, terms on a settlement agreement. We would present it to you for approval at your next council meeting on October eleventh. Or, um, uh, there is a possibility. That you can approve us this type of settlement agreement immediately following the executive session when we go back into an open session. Uh, so that is a possibility. Um, otherwise it would be approved at another council meeting, assuming. The council wishes to go in that direction. So the, the details of all of this are things that, uh, we can discuss in the executive session collectively. Um. And I think.
Does the session have to be in person or can it be virtual?
Um, it, it should probably be.
So you're looking for hopefully one night this week that we can all agree.
Or, or next.
Or next. But you said ideally this week, right?
It, it, for me personally, it would be better this week.
No, we've got a timeline here. It's like the clock is ticking. Um, do you anticipate? Can you give us an idea how long?
I, I think if, if there's not a whole lot of questions, um, collectively, I think we can finish within an hour to two hours. Um, not need to be at night. It can be at another time of day if that works for council. Um. We can, we can, we don't have to select the night right now. Um, we can do that with the clerk.
Erica can, okay, can reach out to us.
Yeah, but, um, I, I think what I told William earlier today was Thursday, uh, works fine for me. Um. Uh, as far as if we wanted to do an evening meeting. Um, otherwise, uh, during the day also works.
When we do a Thursday night, Thursday night good for everybody?
Plays Virginia on Thursday night. Sure.
Yeah. What do we need procedurally to do? What do we need procedurally?
Procedurally, I just need to announce this request at a public meeting, which is what I'm doing. And then the clerk, uh, and I and William will coordinate with you the date and time so that we can meet. Um, and we'll just, we'll notice the meeting. There's a, a special notice that the clerk's office and I will put together and publish. Um, but otherwise you just give us the date you're available and we show up and we'll go from there.
There's just, let's just, why don't we just come up with something right now and, you know?
Okay. Well, how does Thursday sound that way?
I'd like to avoid Thursday evening.
Thursday evening. All right. All right, Erica, why don't you? Yeah.
Possible earlier than seven.
Uh, he.
I'd really like to avoid Thursday, but I could do Wednesday.
We don't need to do Thursday. Um, if we're looking at next week, just so you know my availability. It would be Monday or Tuesday night. Um, if it's an evening meeting, like I said, we can do it during the day. Um, but if it's an evening meeting, um, it doesn't need to be a late evening. It doesn't need to be at seven o'clock. It can be at five o'clock. Uh, really, so.
Monday or Tuesday.
Monday.
All right. It's Monday.
Monday next week.
Monday, the fourth. Good for. Yeah.
Jackie's good.
That way we leave here and we kind of already have an idea unless.
Yeah, exactly. What, what time is good for?
You don't need the council chamber, correct? Since we do have a board of adjustment meeting that night at six thirty.
We usually have the, those in the hallway.
I just want to make sure that that's the case. Okay. Is that correct, Heidi, that we can just go to the conference room or we have to open it up here first?
We, we should, we should open it up in chambers. Um, I haven't seen an agenda for board of adjustments. So. If there's a meeting next week, um, I, I'm surprised, but.
You can reconvene afterwards?
I don't remember. We've had these before. I don't remember that we've ever, we've just always met right in the conference room, locked the door.
I've taken roll call and then I leave.
Correct.
Everyone stays.
Yeah, we've done it.
It's been a while. So.
That's fine.
We were available for Monday. It seems like everyone in the council, just so you have an idea for Monday night. At five o'clock, correct? Oh, at.
Five is. Five might be tight for wall.
If there is a board meeting, we'd be done here by six.
Yeah, but I don't think. Yeah, yeah, that, that's a good point too, because we'd be in and out in five minutes. Yeah. Monday at six o'clock.
Monday, six, Monday, the fourth at six P M.
Decent.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. All right. Other, um, let's go to the city manager.
Uh, just want to remind everyone that, um, this week we're starting vaccinations twice a week now, Tuesday and Fridays at the aquatic center. Uh, we also posted online the latest, uh, CVC advisory on, uh, who's eligible now for the third booster shots. They've made a few changes. So we posted that online. Um, and hopefully they'll start doing Tuesday and Fridays from now on. So. You have any events?
No.
Uh, that's all I have, right?
Hey, um, vice mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Um, we have the, uh, driver's license starting up. I seem to have read recently too, right? The, on the third, the Thursday.
I've had a lot of people ask for that.
And, and the only difference.
November.
Booked for October and November. They're working on this.
This summer.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. That's excellent. That's excellent that that services come back. There's a lot of people have asked me about that. Um, I'd like to thank the administration, um, certainly for, uh, obviously the culmination of the two public hearings and the budget. Uh, finalization here, here this evening and, and all members for their, their frank discussion throughout the process that we started in August. And we were able to come to, uh, to terms on this. Um. And, uh, I'd like to thank you all for that. And William, certainly all of your work in preparation and everything. Um, and I'd also like to thank the administration for having the foresight to figuring out how to get a grant writer in here without spending seventy two thousand dollars. Um, uh, that was brilliant. And she seems to be a fine gal that, uh. It's got some credentials like Walt said earlier. So, uh, I think we're, I think we're in a tall cotton in that one for sure. Um, the other thing I'd like to say, and you've all got copies I've given you this evening and, and, uh, that particular package that I had, had given members tonight. Uh, has to do with the war memorial, uh, that the, uh, uh, the American Legion post thirty-two is pursuing with the city. And I wanted everybody to be up to date fully with what's going on with it. I tried to be as comprehensive as possible in the preparation of the package. Um, and I just happen to have a thought tonight here during the meeting being the parks and parkways here. Um, we really don't have, actually, I think I mentioned it in the, in the cover letter there, that, uh, landscape architecture is not included. Uh, maybe the parks and parkways could help us out without.
Make some recommendations.
You know, down the road. So, um, uh, please read it and it, it's, it's, uh, there is a rendering in there. And also there's a, there's a floor, the floor plan for, um. Uh, what we, uh, what we envision, uh, happening with it. And like I said, we've gone out to the state, our state senator, state representative, two county commissioners, Sosa and Diaz. And, um, and, uh, and we're going to start the private, uh, funding, uh, requests as well. Um, so.
Vice mayor, that rendering is phenomenal. That is, that is absolutely phenomenal.
That, uh, that is the handiwork of, uh, Manny Bichette Perez, by the way, Southeast Design. He did that pro bono for us.
And my Miami Springs resident, Miami Springs resident.
And a Miami Springs resident and a business owner in Miami Springs. Absolutely correct.
That would be top notch.
So, uh, we'll stay tuned for that. And I'll keep as, as we go along with this, I'll certainly keep council updated and the administration updated on, uh. Uh, any, any, any new developments. Um, thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, councilwoman Bravo.
Um, no, I just wanted to thank staff and, um, our city manager, Tammy Erica. Um, and our, our whole group for another purposeful meeting. And thank you, Bob Best, for always taking care of our veterans and, um.
Don't forget Councilman Vasquez. He's the chair of the ad hoc committee, by the way, that, uh, put this thing together.
Beautiful. Um, so I'm looking forward to see this come to light and I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Councilman ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for the work that we did on the, on the budget process. I think the fact that nobody came to speak, uh, tells you that. Everybody is pleased with, uh, with the outcome. Uh, and I just want to thank the members of the, of the boards that are working the. I, I think it's wonderful, the service that, uh, people like Eric Ritchie and, and, uh, and that Wendy Brewer are doing. Uh, so. I can't thank them enough and, and all the members of the board. And I'm very happy to, that we got Bell Tower Consulting and, and he just seems like a, a very. Talented young lady that's gonna do a lot of good work for us. So I'm very pleased.
Councilman, uh, Vasquez.
Um, yeah, two things I wanted to mention tonight, um, which I've been thinking about for the past, uh. Few days and I spoke to, uh, uh, city manager about it. And, um, it has to do with, it has to do specifically with what happened with U T D. And the United Teachers of Dade and, and, and a second, uh, uh, vandalism situation that occurred. Um, and I know that, uh. You all know some of that history of the, you know, U T D, the sign, the mural citations, right? Uh, and, and I appreciate, uh, William sending me the citation. I could see specifically what the things were. That the city cited on and, uh, and that's all moving in a particular direction. There's a code compliance. Um, hearing on November second. So I don't want to say much about that, uh, but, but I, but it, it did bring to mind, um. A couple of things I heard from a couple of businessmen as I was campaigning back in the early part of the year about signage on Northwest. Uh, thirty-sixth street. And so I'm hoping that, um. Uh, with the assistance as well of the economic development task force. That, um, and, and in our own process of, of reviewing codes regarding signage. That we look at, at the bigger picture of Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street in particular, right? As a, as an important business vein. Um, and, and, and as we look to update our codes. That, you know, we keep in mind, uh, all of Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street in terms of. What is permissible and what is in it? And how does the code maybe need to be changed or reflected of that reality? I just wanted to. Bring that point because I think this is something, uh, that we need to look at, uh, look forward and look, uh. In, in a forward manner to addressing it in a comprehensive way. Not a particular group or particular organization or particular business, but it did bring to mind to me, uh, some of these issues. That I hope that, that we can get to, um, as we move forward, I guess, with the beginning of the year. Of next year, when we look at a code review. Am I correcting that, William? Is that still the, the timeframe?
You remember the budget we did for the.
Yeah, yeah, we did. We did put a timeframe. I, I, I thought it was the beginning of the year and we also. I'm sorry, council, councilor.
Confirming, yes, we, we will start working on the sign code. In fact, uh, staff has already given. The, some of their ideas and we'll start working on that. So we'll, we'll, the process will get started.
Wonderful. Well, I'm just bringing this up that to be sort of folded into. Wonderful. Well, I'm just bringing this up that to be sort of folded into the conversation. And secondly, I do want to thank my colleague Vice Mayor Bob Best for his efforts in the in the process of of the war memorial. You know, he spent a lot of time here. We were looking up the, you know, getting information about the fact that Miami Springs, I was very proud to, as a veteran myself, to see that Miami Springs is one of the few cities in the county, going back to nineteen forty-five, that has been commemorating our war debt and the country ultimate price that Americans have paid for our freedom. And that this war memorial, this upgrade of a war memorial, because we're saving part of the memorial is going to be such an important addition. And you're absolutely right, Madam Mayor, and 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 Councilman Fajee. This rendition, I just love this. And it's evolved, it's a couple of things, but it integrates the scouts' flag disposal, the the pit that was done by an Eagle Scout and and it gives, it'll give a new visual for all of our events around Veterans Day and Memorial Day and so forth, it'll really be a top notch. So I want to thank Bob for his leadership on this and working with with William and and some of our elected officials. We are starting to raise money for this ourselves. That's part of the effort that we're trying to do. Be great if the, you know, the state could help us out and and the commission. You know, we have sort of an idea how much this is going to cost, but working all together, I think it's it's an honorable thing to do. And it will certainly make us stand out even further in recognizing, recognizing the folks that have not only served in our, served in the military service like many of us have, but for those who haven't returned. And this would be a fitting thing to do. So thank you, William, for your support of this effort and the rest of council to to get this done and Representative Avila and Commissioner Sosa and all the folks that have been have all said, listen, yes, we want to, we want to participate in this. I think we're not going to have an issue, hopefully keeping our fingers crossed, right? Particularly from the state level, the funding, but I don't think, haven't heard a negative thought anywhere about what we're doing here. So I think.
It was, if I might, if I might just add right here at this point in your discussion through the chair, of course, that the thank, thanks to the city clerk. The city clerk spent a lot of time with me last week for two days, allowing me to go through archives from the city, covered from fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five and fifty-six. And then follow up the women's club opening for the dedication of the street the other day. Two of the four people that were going after showed up. So it was perfect. It worked out really, really well. Sorry to interrupt you there, Vic. I just wanted to mention that. Small aspect on, thank you for your leadership on the chair of the ad hoc committee, by the way.
My honor. That's all I bet.
Okay, and I I want to echo, I want to thank Vice Mayor Best and Councilman Vasquez for this rendering and Manny Perez or his services, professional services. I know this isn't by any means the first time that he's volunteered his exceptional professional services as an architect, his that of his whole firm to help the city. This is beautiful, but I think when it's finalized, it's going to be breathtaking. The plane at night is just what.
Mayor, we certainly hope so. We're going to do everything we can to make that come to come to fruition.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to mention that October seventh, so next Thursday, I believe, is not this coming one, oh, next week.
Thursday, yes.
Is the second business and economic development.
That's right.
A task force meeting, and I know the task force members asked the business community to please come and speak at the meeting to let them, you know, reach out, come to the meeting and let them know what their concerns are, their frustrations, their their recommendations. So I'd like to ask all the council also to please, as you're out in the community, you know, when you talk to business owners in Miami Springs, let them know and remind them and ask them to attend the meeting. And I think the meeting is six. It's on October second, uh, seven, October seventh.
Yes, Thursday.
The first Thursday of the month, and it's at six P M. Right here. Okay.
On that, Madam.
Yes.
I I did get a call from one of the members of the board, Captain Nihal Pereira. He asked if if he took some information about the board off the off the website and and if we can make copies of it and just give to them, just circulate it through the business community, maybe. I don't know if our P L A's or someone could help with that, but just to make sure that business people are, yeah.
And that they're invited.
Did you hear from him about it?
So we had already planned this, but we did a mail out to all businesses.
Okay.
In Miami Springs.
Excellent.
I'll tell them two things, telling them about the existence of the Public Nuisance Board and also telling them about the Business and Economic Board and when the meeting was going to be and that they were welcome to. And we also gave them the website, city website, where they could go on the link and get information on that.
And I said we could have a good turnout.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And the other thing is, I just wanted to thank the council members and our city staff, William and Tammy Erica for the budget process. I think we did an exceptional job this year. We had three budget workshops in August into spaced with, you know, our regular council meetings. There was a lot of work to be done. We put a lot of things on our budget, a lot of improvements, a lot of of things that are going to make this community, you know, keep getting better and better, which is our goal. And we were still able to keep the millage at the rollback rate of seven, what is it, seven point zero two? Which is just phenomenal. So I think I just want to thank everyone for a really smooth process and I I think the the community is very happy about it. They deserve it. They deserve, you know, keeping their taxes, our our millage rate is one, has always been one of the highest in the county because we don't have the commercial backing. And this is just an effort to let the community know we're working as hard as we can to to lower that. So with that said, oh, and the last thing I wanted to say is with the grant writing, I want to echo Vice Mayor Best, his comment. William, y'all did a phenomenal job in coming up with a solution for a grant writer. It seems like it's it's a company with she's got the reputation, the references, you know, the the track that shows that, you know, that she and her company are able to work with us to try to acquire some of these grants. And it's a cost savings to us as far as not having a full-time staff person. So phenomenal work. I'm looking forward to that. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Did you guys happen to see, notice anything different in the Gazette this week?
No.
Crossword puzzles gone.
Oh, no.
Yes. So if you see Curtis, let him have it, will you? And the new Gazette, the crossword puzzle is gone. He took it out. I can't believe you just forgot it.
Husband does the crossword puzzle.